Okay, can everyone hear me? Okay, excellent. Welcome, everyone. The Waterford School Board Committee of the whole virtual meeting is called the Order. As with all Board of Ed meetings, the link for participation and materials are available on the district's website. We will welcome audience participation following board discussion this evening. If you would like to participate at that time during the audience participation, you will be asked to signify that your desire to raise or to address the board by using the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom, or you can submit a request to address the board to Megan Roberts, and her email is r o b e r m zero one at w s d m i dot org. And just for a reminder, for those people who might be tuning in this evening, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so we will not be taking any action this evening, but rather having a discussion around the fall's return to learn plan. So with that said, if you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag
of the United States
United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
And
one nation
And
under God indivisible
Invisible.
With liberty and justice Okay. In the absence of Secretary Halls, Member Petrusia, you're serving as secretary. Will you please take roll call?
I presume we're all here except for Member Halls, if you would help me there.
We are missing Member Torres, Member Halls, and looks like Member Pigott as well.
Oh, thank you.
You got it. Okay, excellent. So if there are no objections, the agenda will be approved as presented. Okay, excellent. Well, now we're going to get off to Superintendent Lindberg for our return to learn update. Superintendent Lindberg.
Thank you, President Ristich, members of the community. I want to just to give my utmost appreciation to this team, all that you see on this screen. There have been so many times in the last couple of weeks, certainly in the last week or two, that we, no kidding, have been working around the clock to work on these complex issues, these challenges that have not been brought on by us or anyone on this team, but on the pandemic, on this health crisis, with the foremost goal of getting our kids back to learning and connecting with our teachers. So this team has multiple, has pivoted multiple times, have come up with plans A, B, C, and D, and then replanned again, listened to stakeholders and made the adjustments. We have reached out and made many, many return calls and emails to our parents and families to work through fears, the concerns and some of the challenges of the new technology, and I couldn't be more proud of this team. So what we're going to bring you aboard tonight is just kind of an update on where we are now and where we're going forward. And so in the spirit of the committee of the whole, we'll be open to questions or anything you'd like to add to that tonight. And so I think Kelly's going to bring that up on the screen. I personally have been encouraged by comments and emails from teachers and staff as we've moved forward. And I think we've done a good job listening. We're going to continue to do that and making those adjustments to make sure we address those issues that are out there. So this is an ever-changing environment, and we will continue to be on our toes to make those changes and modifications as needed on a daily basis. We do this in a team approach. So I'm going to turn it over now. Who will start off? Lisa Eldridge, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and her team. Lisa?
Or I could unmute myself first, that would help. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening for this kind of exciting presentation about what life has been like the first few days of school and where we're heading with our next extended plan. So Kelly, you can go on to the next slide. And I actually am not doing all the talking this evening. I want to welcome Deb Cooper in her new role as Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she will discuss with you the professional development that occurred with teachers at the start of this year.
Thank you, Lisa, and welcome, everyone, this evening. First of all, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the incredible team that worked right alongside me to put professional learning together for all of our, for our teachers at the beginning of this year. And that would include a number of our high school administrators, high school teachers, our whole CIA team, Jane T. Kelly for putting together all of our videos, Susan, Jim Beaver, Officer Golda, Shelley Workman, Ann Cruz, who worked on the SCL components. It was truly a team effort. And what our goal was, as we originally began talking about the need for professional learning this year, it was really a response to a number of components, and that was teacher input, parent input, student input, taking what we learned from the spring and creating a robust learning atmosphere as we welcome everyone back and providing those necessary components for our teachers to be successful and thus having our students be welcomed back in the best way that we can in a virtual remote setting. So what we did is we presented the professional learning modeling the same way. So we presented it as virtual, as you can see on the screen, asynchronous professional learning. So what that afforded is the opportunity for staff to really dig into each one of the different videos that were presented to them. They could watch them independently. They could watch them as a PLC and then have discussion about how each one of those components would really fit into whether their grade level plan at the elementary level or their content area at the secondary. So each one of the segments comprised a number of different topics for them. So over the course of the days, they had really professional learning tailored to the needs of them. At their request, they said very loudly in the spring, they wanted more information on SCL components. They wanted additional tools and tricks for their toolbox for success in the Google environment. And again, we were conscious of what we needed per level. So the elementary day looks a bit different than the day at the secondary because the secondaries are in block. And again, that varies. Pierce's block is a bit different than Mason's, and the high schools aren't synced with one another, but we wanted to make sure that teachers were comfortable with teaching in that longer block of time and then having the requisite skill sets within the Google platform to find success in their individual classrooms. So we did a blend of focusing on the return to learn components as well as our district items. So the focus on return to learn embodied many different aspects. And again, that's included in the bulleted list here. So first of all, we are so grateful to have the new math program, and we're really diving into that specified training at the elementary level. So they had a very long session on how to get that math program up and running also in a new platform, right? So they're not with their students. So what does that look and feel like as they're engaged in remote learning? That training will continue this fall as well. We're planning already with our representative from our new math program to join us on November 3rd. So that training will be ongoing as we welcome in the new math program. We had a segment on Google supports and examples, and it was our goal to really support our teachers with the new Google templates. So we heard the parents, we heard the students. And if you can imagine, at the high school level, students were navigating seven different Google classrooms. Our parents, who might have students at the elementary, middle, high school level, all blended, are then opening all different Google platforms and Google classrooms in their house. So what we strove for is working with Elizabeth to really develop a robust Google template for all of our teachers to use. So when parents, when students are opening the Google classroom for each class, they have similar components. So we know what their learning targets are. We know what needs to be accomplished in the day. We know where assignments are being placed. We know where the calendar is because it's our goal to have that a standard across the entire district. So again, that's in response to a lot of feedback that we heard from the parents. So we thank them for providing that feedback, and that allowed us to make some changes and adapt to meet the needs of the teachers, the students, the parents. We also had SCL support from the district lens as we're continuing with our commitment to SCL support. We had training last year at the beginning of the year with Dr. Julie McDaniel. We're continuing that work. But we also recognize that each building is unique and has its own levels of support in PDIS. So we want to recognize that. So we have a district standard, and we pushed out district SCL components, but also we want to make that unique to each building. So if it's a ruler building, they had continued SCL work on their PD at the building level. We also went over health and safety requirements with the return to learn. So what is our response to COVID? Where are we putting sanitation stations in the building? How do we wear a mask? What are the requirements to stay six feet apart even as we welcome people back into the building? So we're grateful that Jim Beaver was able to film a segment for us and be able to share that critically important information to make sure that staff and those students who come in for pods are all recognizing what the CDC guidelines are and what the district regulations and protocols are as we re-enter our buildings. We also embrace where we are in the unknown with teacher evaluation. Teachers tend to get anxious about what that will look and feel like, especially as we don't have guidance yet from the state of Michigan. So Susan File was able to address that. And then we had a really tremendous resource from the MSU K-12 Outreach group that shares information with the schools. So what that looked like was a guidance document to really break down our framework in Danielson and help our teachers recognize how to be effective and what best practices in an online platform. So we're really grateful that we could embed that into PD as well for our staff. And that is, again, going to be ongoing conversation with our teachers as we engage in evaluation practices as we go forward in the year. We'd rather be proactive with that approach than wait for the state of Michigan to come in later and say, we're not doing this, we are doing this. We want to get ahead of it so that our teachers are comfortable and again, engaged in best practices of instruction. In addition to that, we rolled out the new sketch plan, so that's been adopted. We're now a sketch provider. That's a state continuing education clock hour, and that is the means by which teachers keep their certifications current. They have a requisite number of hours that they need to meet. So we are now a sketch provider. So they have a new way of reporting all of their professional learning, and that creates a level of accountability for the district, for the teachers, and it allows us to have a really great warehouse of where we are with that. And then we can again, report back to the state of Michigan. Part of that is our continued commitment to professional learning through what we have this year rolling out, which are collaborative curriculum team meetings. So we have four of those opportunities throughout the year through a wonderful agreement with the union. We have an extended period of time. And again, this goes back to the response from the teachers of what they needed and what was helpful as we were off from, I shouldn't say off, but away from the buildings from March until June. So as the teachers were engaged in remote learning and teaching during that time period, we had a number of swap meets that teachers engaged in professional learning across grade levels within PLCs. So it was very, very effective. So we're excited to be able to provide that again for them to meet vertically, horizontally, to make sure that we have ongoing support with our curriculum needs. So it came together very beautifully. It was all, again, delivered in a virtual platform so that teachers could engage that way and then again, share their Google Forms of their commitment and their attendance in each one of those. So overall, we were able to be responsive to the needs of students, parents, and our teachers in our plan for professional development this fall. Thank you.
Okay, and now I'm going to turn it over to Nadine Milo Stan, who's going to talk a little bit about where we are in the Student Support Services Department.
Well, good evening, everyone. Just a quick update. We are in our final stages of showing up our special education learning pods. Our teachers will be getting information next week, and then we'll be reaching out to parents as to the specific schedule of what their student can expect on the days that they will be attending those pods. In terms of where our special education teachers and ancillary staff are at and with their service delivery, we know that when they are, our students are in the remote learning platform as well as the virtual academy, as even for those students that will be attending their pods, some of those schedules are going to be flexible, but they will be meeting with their students over a variety of platforms and reaching out to parents to take a look at and review those services that have been outlined in their plans from last year to make sure, again, that those plans are strong and holding steady for the students' needs. If at any time that those plans, those IEP plans are, need any kind of adjustments, it may be that those teachers and/or ancillary service providers will reach out to the parent and talk to them about a contingency plan. And that means, in essence, that while we are away from our brick and mortar setting, that the services will just be delivered over a variety of different formats. We also know that we'll be reviewing all of our IEPs, and if necessary, there may be need to hold amendments or IEPs that were written with parents. And so just know that teachers and service providers will be reaching out to parents to have those conversations. Over the last three years now, we have had an amazing relationship with Celebrate Hope. As board members, you know that they have presented at several board meetings at this, at this time over those three years. We have now secured them again for this upcoming year, and we know that more than ever, our parents need support in this new reality that they are living through. And so we have a number of support gatherings. They will be taking place virtually at this point until we have an opportunity to bring folks back in a more face-to-face format. But our virtual meetings have been going fantastic. And so hats off to our partnership with Celebrate Hope, John Ball, and Lisa Goyet, because they have certainly provided an outstanding service to our parents. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, and not only will we be taking a look at IEPs, but we know within the first 30 school days, our staff will be doing informal assessments on each of our students just to make sure that, you know, again, they're in the right place at the right time, under the right situations. And so we want to make sure that if we need to make any adjustments to those IEPs based upon some of the information that we now have this fall versus when we last saw our students, that that will be happening. We also know that for those students that, you know, may not be where we want them to be because of the, because of the loss of learning that took place, we will be having conversations with parents on an individual basis regarding recovery services and what that might look like. The Michigan Department of Education has issued a statement to local school districts that we need to be having those conversations by December. So once we do our assessments, once we have an opportunity to have more involved conversations with our parents, understand where our students are at, parents can expect that we'll be having conversations as to what potential recovery services, based upon the loss of learning that may have happened for their student last spring, what that might look like. So I hope that provides you just a little bit of insight of what's going on, lots more, but those are our highlights. Thank you.
Any questions before we move on to technology? I don't want to cut off any questions you might have as we work through this. All right, then I'm going to turn it over to Darren Holly, so he can talk a little bit about where we are in terms of the devices.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Just before I started, I can't go without saying thank you so much to so many folks that have been working really hard, especially from Computer Services, Tom and Ian, and the whole crew over there. They're distributing devices right now, so I know that they're not watching, but they have been working early mornings, late nights, through the weekends to find anything available in our buildings that we could send home to families to get us through this hump. So to start with, last week and during the weekend, we distributed about 1,100 devices. And families that didn't show up, we contacted again for distribution this week, and we've got, had distributions on Wednesday, tonight, and tomorrow. And we are very hopeful that our remaining devices are going to show up and ship within the next two weeks. As a result of that, some, our schedules really district-wide had to be modified to accommodate those that don't have access to a device right now. And our student, our student support at wsdmi.org, the hotline really for assistance, any technical issues with computers not being able to log on or having to reset passwords, they've been very busy responding to those. It's been quite overwhelming, but I think we're getting through the worst of it right now. And we continue to record requests for, for students that either move into the district or they had a device at home and it broke, so that, you know, they're requesting new devices. So right now, it looks like we are still in good shape as far as the devices that were ordered versus the requests that we have in. And as soon as they come in, we are going to be handing them out as fast as we possibly can, evenings, daytimes, just so that, to try to make sure that it's as convenient as possible for parents to pick them up.
Any questions for Darren?
I have a question.
Sure.
How many more devices do we have coming?
We have about 2,000 more devices coming. And again, I'm not sure exactly when they're getting, we don't have tracking numbers, but we're told within two weeks, we're going to have at least a good chunk of them.
Okay, so they're not gonna, it's not like they're shipped in two weeks, and then we'll get them a week later. In two weeks, we should start getting them?
Yes.
Okay, and that should be good. Now, what, the November, we were, we had ordered some, and they had said something about November, like, did we cancel that order or we're still going to get that order?
No, we are canceling that order. That's just, that's too, too long to wait.
Okay, okay. And that you believe that the remaining 2,000 that we're going to get should be enough for everybody that needs one?
I track it daily.
Okay, I know you do.
I mean, I can't predict, you know, if, you know, the number of requests that will continue to come in. We expected that once school started, that we would get additional requests, and we have. But right now, so far, we are, we're going to be in good shape with that.
Okay, good. And the buttons, the hotspot buttons, we had enough of those?
Yeah, we have enough so far. We're still waiting for some folks to pick them up, but I'm hopeful that we're going to be within the allocated amount that we, that we already purchased. So I don't think we're going to need anymore.
Okay, so we were pretty much on target.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Good job, Darren, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
So I know that there are just, every computer that exists, districts are gobbling them up. But was I, I thought I heard something about these things were also held up at the state level. Is that, did I trip or misread or mishear something?
Well, there's, everything's being held up. I mean, that's, that's been the problem. But lucky for, and honestly, Lisa, everybody has chipped in to try to find devices. The state had purchased about 30,000 units, and they were sitting in a warehouse, and we were able to get a good chunk of those. So we didn't purchase 30,000, we don't need that many, but we, we were able to order enough through there, through Amazon, through Best Buy. I mean, we were really looking everywhere we could get our hands on pockets of devices so that we could get them here in time.
I'm wondering too if you could say more about the, the student support at wsdmi.org, this, this sort of tech support line?
Yeah, when we hand out a computer to families, we give them a packet of information. One is how to log onto the computer the very first time. And, and the other is to, you know, how to, you know, get into Google Classroom, any setup information, they get that when they, they, when they pick up their device. Sometimes that paper gets lost, or there are some technical issues. It's technology, it's, things happen with it. So that student support at WSDMI is staffed by our Computer Services Department. And although it's been busy because they're trying to hand out devices and, and deal with that, that, that has typically, right now, that's been used mostly for password resets. If people forgot their passwords and things like that. And we have given, elementary buildings have the ability, teachers have the ability to reset their own students' passwords. So we, we shared that with teachers and reminded them that they can do that. And really, for parents to know, I guess, if I'm speaking to the parents, the first, the first line of communication, if you're having issues, is always to, to talk to your teacher first. Teacher more than likely is going to be able to answer or help you with that issue. And if not, they're going to direct you immediately to Student Support Services or studentsupport@wsdmi.org, not Student Support Services, that's Nadine's department. But, and then we man those and respond to those and get in touch with the families if it requires a phone call, if it requires email. We, we have the ability to remote into these machines to assist in that way as well. So that's, that's what, that department's been very busy.
I can imagine. Well, thank you, it's a really impressive effort, really. Thank you, thank you. Who's, who's staffing the Student Support at wsdmi.org?
They all, they all have access to it. So any free person at that time is in there. And I know some of my folks are late night owls, so they, they always go in there. I see responses at 2:00 in the morning sometimes, you know, in that group. So it's, they're just, they're really stepping up to the plate, and I can't, can't tell you enough how much I appreciate them.
Well, shout out to them, and make sure, make sure, we'll give them as many shout outs as we can fit in this, these couple hours here. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just play back to that for one second, I just want to clarify something to make sure we all understand. The state didn't purchase those computers, they reserved them, we still had to purchase them. It's not like the state purchased them for us. They just secured them through this company, Stratics. And actually, the nice thing about these particular 2,000 that we're getting is they come with their own support for technical problems. So there's an 800 number that parents and students can call, so that will relieve our student support at wsdmi.org a little bit, although they're still available, of course, to help in any way. But I just wanted to make sure nobody thought that the state purchased those for us.
They were not free.
No, but they were cheaper than the ones we were going to buy, so that's good. So, all right, thanks, Kelly. So this week, we had a wonderful start to the year. It was a little rocky, but as always, everybody is excited to see the kids, and kids are excited to see their teachers and their principals, and it's always just filled with a lot of smiles, and it was this year as well. Yes, it was different, and nobody loves this, but it is what we have, and we are definitely making the best of it. I wanted to share with you tonight that these are the percentages of those students who have enrolled with us so far. And remember, this time of year, we're getting enrollments every day. This is the percentage of students who are in remote and who are in virtual at each level and then through our district. Those numbers don't include KMS, CBS, LifeTrax, or Stepansky, just so you know, it's our, our high schools and Durant and our other elementaries and middle schools. For learning pods, for the general ed students, at the elementary level, we have a team in place. We talked about the work group, like, groups last week. And they actually were joined this week by the CIA department. And so they have worked together to identify 197 students to participate in those pods at eight, seven of the elementaries. The two elementaries that are holding childcare will not have pods in them because we want to lessen the number of students in a given building. And so we thought would be best for those buildings to have their pods at another elementary. And so, we thought would be best for those buildings to have their pods at another elementary on a different day and/or on two different days. And so, we are working through that logistics piece of it. The invitations went out this afternoon and then the next week, we'll get responses back from parents, we'll find out if they need bus transportation and then we'll turn that information over to Jim. And we don't have a definite start date yet, but once this all turns around, then we're hoping to start at the latest on the 21st. So, that's where we are with the elementary pods and they've been working so diligently on that, it's, it's a fun group to watch them and their ideas. All of our interventionists have agreed to help with those pods and we're making it a reading focus. We're using last year's NWEA where it's available from the winter as well as some quick assessments that, that teachers have done in the few days that they've been with their students. And we are focusing on first, second, and third graders so that we can kind of focus on that read by third grade law. So, that's where we are with elementary. At secondary, we're focused on English learners as we, as we've talked about. Buildings are using their own schedules to work out time slots for those students to come in because they actually have EL teachers in the buildings, so they want to work around their schedules so that they can be available to help with the pods. So, each secondary school is doing their own identification using WEATA scores, which is the language performance assessment that we give all English language learners. And so, they're determining those students in the highest need. And again, then they will be sending out invitations, determining, bussing, sending that information to Jim with hopefully the same start time as the elementaries of September So, what's next for us? This looks like a big confusing map of things to be done and it is. And it's what we have to do over the course of the next few weeks and months. This is, you, you weeks ago saw our continued learning plan and then you saw our preparedness plan for COVID instruction. And now, this is our extended COVID-19 learning plan implementation map. So, within the next few weeks, we will be setting some educational goals and they will be surrounding math and literacy. And then, we will be conducting our benchmark assessments. We happen to be very fortunate in this and we just got word from the state today that our plan for doing it remotely has been approved. So, we've always used NWA for many years here, as you know, and that is one of the state allowed benchmark assessments. It's approved by the state of Michigan and the MDE. And so, we will be able to do that with students from home. And that will be all students K8, so whether they're in virtual or whether they're in remote learning, they will be partaking in the NWA test. We're going to be working on a schedule for that and some directions and some planning. But our goal in the next two weeks is to get our goals set for what that will look like. If we test now, what goals do we hope to have achieved by mid-year and then what goals do we have, hope to have achieved by the end of the year? Now, the state is mandating two benchmark assessments every year. We do three with NWA and we will continue to do three because we feel that really helps us. It helps teachers to do that. Normally, the state requires three, but for this year, they, they lessened it to two, but we're going to maintain our three times a year. By October 1st, we have to have our entire plan written and it needs to talk about how we're going to ensure that students are learning and we're meeting all the benchmarks that the grade level indicates and how we will help catch kids up who may have slid a little bit since we weren't really fully in school since March 12th. That plan will go to the ISD for approval. And once it's approved, they will forward it to the MDE for approval. And then, for this group, monthly following October 1st, we will report out to you on how that's going, how things are going with our benchmark testing, how things are going with our day-to-day instruction. We'll also be talking to you about something we call two-way interactions between students and teachers, or possibly at the elementary between parents and teachers. What that means is that we are required by the extended learning plan to have two, two-way interactions with each student or their parent per week. And a week is cited as Wednesday to Tuesday. And the reason they do that is because not only can we use that for our learning plan, we can also use that for our attendance recording as we are remote or virtual. And so, we are going to do that, we're going to use it for both things, but we'll be reporting to you once a month on how many, what percentage of our students were engaged using a two-way interaction between teacher and student or parent and student each week, Wednesday through Tuesday. And we'll do that monthly. So, in October, I'll be able to come back to you because we have a system in place now and say, okay, the first week of school, here's how many students we had, our percentage of students who had a two-way interaction. The second week of school, these dates, here's how many students we had. And we'll be able to track that over time and see how we're doing. And then, that's called our reconfirmation. We're going to publicly talk to you about it and once we get our benchmark assessments again in February, we'll talk about that. How did it go? How do we do? How are students doing in their progress? And where are we going to go next to ensure that we keep moving forward with this? It's comprehensive. I think it's, the tenants of it are very good. It keeps us focused on what we need to be focused on and doesn't allow us to lose sight of making sure that kids' academic success and growth are our main goals in all of this. It's been, it's been a very detailed and intense time. And sometimes, when you're caught in the details of everything, it's easy to forget that we're really here about kids. And this is a nice way for us to remember that. It's, although it seems like it's a lot to do, I think it's good stuff and we can really get our arms around it. And yes, as just as everyone else has, I need to take a minute to thank our team who has worked so diligently, the teaching and learning team, Darren Curley, prior to her leaving, Deb has stepped in and just gone running with things. Nadine has done a fabulous job. And of course, she has been amazing to work with in terms of her knowledge of edgenuity and that's Elizabeth Cucci. If you happen to see her around, Elizabeth has been working pretty much 24/7. She and I are emailing late into the night and early in the morning and she has done an amazing job. And I know that she's had thousands of emails to deal with too, which we've been trying to help her out with. So, if she hasn't quite gotten back to you yet, it's because she's been just working her tail off to make sure we could get everything inputted correctly and get WVA started and make sure things are going well with Maestar while training teachers on how to do it all. So, we, a big shout out to Elizabeth because she's done a fantastic job as well. Any questions on anything we've talked about?
I have one question, Lisa, if that's okay?
Of course.
So, in the, I think, you might have mentioned this, I was trying to take in this document here, goals established for middle and end of the year, no later than September 15th. So, these are goals around the assessments that the district will be administering, is that?
Yes, yes. And they will, will look at growth goals because NWA has set up that way, remember? And we always talk with benchmarks about where is a student now, where do they want, we want them to be in the winter, where do we want them to be in the, in the spring? So, we'll set those goals based on the district and that kind of type or framework.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure. Anything else? All right, well, I am certainly available to answer questions if anything comes up, you know where to find me, so.
Hello, I know we've only met once before, but I'm back again. I'm doing the presentation with my staff on what we've been doing with business and operations, not just preparing for the school year to open, but also what we've been doing in anticipation for some of the issues that are coming up as well. So, I would like to thank Amy for doing these presentations, she put together all the slides. And then, Jim and Amy will do the presentation. And I want to also thank, besides Jim and Sam and Allison, they all part, had part of this presentation and added to it to make sure that we got enough information for the board. So, I will turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Andy, appreciate that. We'll start off with maintenance and operations, just kind of want to give you an overview of some of the supplies that we handed out to get ready for this year, obviously with all the requirements and the roadmap. And we talked in previous meetings, just acquiring a lot of this over the summer in anticipation of starting a year with an appropriate amount of PPE for our staff. So, hand sanitizing stations and pumps, we handed out between hand pumps and hallway hand sanitizer, distribution setups, over 500 are out there right now. We, we worked with the buildings to kind of get strategic locations to put some of these hand sanitizer stations throughout the buildings. So, so staff could, could have access to it. And obviously, when we come back for in-class instruction, that will be key to help keep kids safe and sanitized. Masks, huge amount of masks that we sent out, over 14,000 masks have been distributed to all the buildings. A myriad of masks, right? Adult masks, child pediatric masks, N95s, KN95s, clear mask, didn't even know what a clear mask was before all this, but now I know what a clear mask is. And obviously, those sort of purpose for some of our special needs folks. But just, you know, a large number and, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll, that'll get us through at least the first couple of months. Face shields, face shields were required in the return to work roadmap also. We've handed out over 1,000 face shields. As you may recall, I believe I've mentioned before that these face shields were donated, Samantha Majers from Food Service, through her, her food service contacts tapped into a company called PTI Engineered Plastics out of Macomb that were committed to donating 100,000 face shields to local school districts. So, Samantha stepped up, applied for 1,600 masks and we got them for free. So, you know, if you put a few dollars to each of those masks, that's a pretty, pretty nice cost savings that we realized by Samantha doing a little extra legwork on our behalf. So, we appreciate that. Gloves, I've talked about gloves, this seems to be an area where there's a shortage of gloves now, as you can imagine with all the different cleaning requirements that are out there and different sectors of, of industry. Gloves are becoming hard to find and, you know, but we've got a supply and we're, we're handing those out as needed. Signage, again, with the roadmap, signage is an important piece to help with the safety of students and to remind everybody, you know, about proper things like preventing the spread. We put up prevent the spread signs that talk about several topics, including washing your hands, social distancing, wearing face coverings. It's just kind of a good reminder and we put those out throughout all the buildings. Hand washing signs in all of our restrooms. And then, floor decals for social distancing, mainly in the office areas. And then, on all of our exterior entrance doors, you know, do not enter without a face mask. We made sure that we got a supply of those to remind everybody before they come into our facilities that they have to have a face mask on. So, with, with that, almost 1,000 signs are out there, so we're, we're really trying to hit it heavy. Disinfectant white buckets, so, you know, we acquired, as you may recall, you approved a large emergency purchase of these white buckets for us that we purchased in anticipation of returning to class and needing to do cleaning in the classrooms. We have a supply of those, we went ahead and distributed those to all of our secondary buildings. These are 1,000-count white buckets in each room, so every secondary classroom has one of these buckets in and, and it's available for our staff now, you know, if they need to do any sanitizing and they'll certainly be there for when we return to in-class instruction. And then, cleaning, reworking custodial schedules. So, we worked really close with, with our vendor, DM Burr, and, and our team here to, you know, in the return to work roadmap, again, there are a lot of different cleaning requirements that we have to adhere to. We have to adhere to more frequent cleaning throughout the day. We've got to hit the frequently touched surfaces, restrooms. So, we had to rework our schedules to get that in line with that and want to just thank, you know, DM Burr for, for helping us with that and, and re-coordinating our resources to comply with the roadmap. And then, you know, I, I have to acknowledge our team too here at Custodial Maintenance. A huge shout out and a huge thank you, you know, for, to our custodial maintenance team for their extraordinary efforts, you know, to get our buildings ready and to distribute and install all of this PPE and supplies. As I stated, we purchased a lot of this centrally over the summer and then we had to obviously distribute it out to the building. So, that was a, you know, I'm always amazed whenever we, it seems like a really gigantic effort to get it done, but our guys just grab the stuff and go and get it out in the building. So, they did a great job with that. You know, I can name a lot of names, but certainly, you know, John Keglevitz, Sidney Tippett, Ron Mills, their leadership through all this, to working late nights, you know, these guys coming at the crack of dawn, they're early risers, we come in early in the operation side of the house and they stay late a lot of nights, worked a lot of weekends. So, just can't thank them enough for their, their extraordinary effort to make sure we're ready for school. Before I move on to transportation too, you know, I, I welcome Sandy and we greatly appreciate that you're here now. But, you know, I certainly want to acknowledge Amy Dagenhart. She stepped up, did dual duty and really provided a lot of leadership and support for our team throughout all this. It's, it was a lot of work and just like I think everybody is acknowledging, it's been a very stressful time to get everything going and we really appreciate the support. All right, on to transportation.
Jim?
Yeah.
Sorry, before we leave maintenance and operations, and I have a lot of comments, but I'm going to save them all till the end, but the face shields that you mentioned that were donated, can you name the company that did that? Again, I want to reach out to them and just thank them.
Sure, they're PTI Engineered Plastics and they're out of Macomb County.
PT, like Tom, Paul, Tom?
Paul, Tom, I like I.
Yep, like I, okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you so much.
Sure. So, we have a return to work plan for our drivers and our seniority drivers and our bus assistants. We, we, we have several things in place to keep them busy. We, we do every, every year when we start school, we know that, you know, the first couple of days, we're probably shaking out what we call shaking out buses. They get on the road, they get mileage on them, you know, they sat all summer typically. So, you're, you know, you're going to have issues that arise and there's downtime when you have mechanical issues. So, what we're having the drivers do is take the buses out every day, drive them for about an hour and a half. We obviously don't want to use too much fuel, but we want the engines to warm up and get to operating temperature and just test the systems, you know, and like I said, shake out, you know, if we have any alternator issues or if there's any, you know, lights and switches and things like that that need replacement. In anticipation, again, of getting back in the classrooms, this is good. And, you know, we haven't had these buses really, for the most part, on the road since March. So, you know, you take that normal time that we usually end school in June, add a few more months, so we thought it'd be beneficial to get the buses on the road. We're trying not to flood, you know, Waterford Township with a bunch of yellow buses all at once, so, you know, we're getting them out in shifts. And, and we're just trying to keep them on the main roads, you know, we don't really want to get in to disrupt the subdivisions too much. You know, we don't really want to get in to disrupt the subdivisions too much. But our drivers are out, and they're getting back in the seat too, and they're getting a little bit of a refresher after, you know, a long break and back in getting some seat time. Deep cleaning and disinfecting buses. We're, once again, going over the buses, but we're really hitting it hard. We're doing all the windows, we're cleaning all the seats. We're, again, you know, just going over the buses. Once again, I don't think we can do this enough, especially, you know, in the environment that we're in now. But it also gives us an opportunity to review some new cleaning protocols. Again, with the roadmap, there are extraordinary requirements for cleaning of buses between route segments. So we've got some new equipment for the drivers. We've got disinfecting sprayers that they're all going to be using. So this is a good opportunity for us to spend some time with them and make sure that they're clear on what their expectations are for cleaning their buses. Training for new drivers and new mechanic. You know, over the summer, we, you know, when this all went down, we had a few drivers that were in the pipeline that were about to get their CDL license. The board is well aware, you know, bus driver is, hiring bus drivers is a challenge. So if you have somebody that you're having in the pipeline, you certainly don't want to lose them. So we were able to work with them, you know, throughout this, the end of the school year last year, to get them to complete and pass their road tests. So they're back now. We're giving them some seat time with trainers so they can get comfortable with the bus. We also hired a new mechanic, and we're working with him to, so he can obtain his CDL to be successful here also. And then finally, redeployment to meaningful work. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we do on the facilities end. But there are a lot of little detail pieces that, you know, we don't always have time to accomplish. And again, you know, when I say that everybody stepped up to help get ready for the beginning of the school year, we were pulling from all of our areas, you know. Our grounds folks were helping deliver things. Everybody was pitching in. So we felt this is a good opportunity for our transportation staff to also help with some facilities maintenance, help clean up parking lots, fence lines, flower beds, perhaps power washing bleachers, weeding, maybe doing some exterior painting that is needed out there. Just some of the little detail things and that just, you know, we can't do on a regular scheduled basis. So, you know, it'll keep them busy, and it'll help beautify our sites. And again, in anticipation of returning to in-class instruction. All right. The Oakland County Health Division nurses. So just want to give you an update of that. I know Superintendent Lindberg has mentioned that we are getting some resources from the county. As you may recall, there's a $2 million collaboration between Oakland County Health Division and Oakland Schools to bring on nursing support to help deal with this pandemic and returning kids to school. We've been assigned three nurses by the county. There were 68 nurses total, from what I understand, and we received three for Waterford. So yesterday, actually, we conducted a Zoom meeting with those folks. We had a kind of an introductory meeting where we got to meet each other and just kind of talk about, you know, what our expectations are and what they can provide for us. Each nurse is going to be assigned to specific schools. They kind of work it out amongst themselves of who they're going to work with, and we're going to communicate that out to our principals to kind of introduce them to who will be assigned to their buildings. These are all registered nurses. They've been vetted through the county. So, you know, we're looking forward to their expertise. So they'll provide assistance and support to the principals in multiple areas. Student, staff and student training. The, you know, I've referred to the roadmap several times, the guidelines and protocols that are in there. They'll work with them to set up, you know, one of the things that they talked about were, you know, rooms for, if children aren't feeling well at school, setting up, you know, specific rooms where they can be monitored, you know, and just provide some training to the staff members of how to appropriately deal with students who need extra care. Case management, you know, if we have illnesses, you know, we're certainly going to want to track those. And then, you know, just communication. Obviously, communication is important. You know, we realize that people are very anxious about, you know, the whole situation, and communication is key to try to help them deal with it. Obviously, you know, we always say we need to control the message. We don't want the people to make assumptions about what happened or hear things third-party and then make assumptions about what the facts are. So communication is key. So, you know, they'll work with us and our team to make sure that we're getting the appropriate communication out. And also with the Health Division, you know, they work with the Health Division. A big part of dealing with cases is communication with the Health Division so they can certainly be a positive conduit to help us manage that system. They'll be available for us through December 31st. And, you know, we'll begin to, working with them immediately. Like I said, we'll be communicating to the principals here tomorrow to let them know who their assigned nurse is, and they can coordinate in meetings and introductions. We know, you know, childcare is rolling. So, you know, we've asked them to start, you know, with our childcare sites and with the specialty, specialized programs that are coming online later, you know, shortly here later this month. We'll have them focus on those right away also. Any questions with any of that?
Tim, I got a question for you.
Sure.
So in my own place of work, Michigan State, one of the, it seems that there was an emergency. We were slated to start back, and then our president, who's an infectious disease researcher, said no. And one of the conversations that emerged from that was around facilities usage, just like the physical infrastructure. As part of the roadmap and any of the governor's directives or in your own thinking and planning, has that sort of, has that come to your? Are you thinking about that? In other words, is what I'm trying to actually ask here. So understanding that small classes pose a particular challenge. We have other types of spaces. Are there other conversations about how to utilize them? No. I guess maybe I'm just thinking about that.
Well, I think a lot of that's going to be driven by the amount of kids that come back and what our resources are, you know, for staffing. You know, I think, you know, coming back to work, that, you know, that was one of the challenges, was trying to get everybody in the right spot, right? You know, Amy's going to talk about athletics, and, you know, I know MHSAA, you know, just came out with some changes today per the governor's orders that came out today. So yes, facilities have been on my mind all afternoon, actually, as we start thinking about bringing folks back into, you know, either our gym facilities, our pools, things like that. But, yeah, overall, you know, again, you know, we're going to try to social distance as much as we can. But, you know, the reality is that when we come back to in-class, that, you know, we've only got so much space, and we've only got so many resources. So we'll make every effort, but we will try to utilize every facility as efficiently as we can to keep people safe.
Excellent.
You know what, Jim? If I can just give you a little kudos here, you may have already forgotten this or put it behind you because it was seems like forever ago. But Jim did work really hard to identify each space and how many people can safely stay in that space together. And he's done that in the schools, and he's, we worked with the principals to gather some information on that too. So we do have that in the wings if we need it. It just seems like so long ago, Jim, doesn't it? We were working on that.
Thanks, Lisa. Yes, you know, now that you mention that, I do remember that conversation.
Yes.
Just the bazillion conversations after that, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Amy now. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I think that was one of those conversations before we took a veer, or as I say, a sharp right. So that was during that time. A big shout out to Sam Majers. She's the director of the Food Service Department and her staff because they have been working tirelessly since March. So as you know, they have been serving hundreds of thousands of meals since that time. So we did start our first meal distribution, August 28th. It was both breakfast and lunch, and it was four days. It was for this actual week of school. We do, we did have another food distribution today. Last week, they did about 4,500 meals. As of today, they did another 11,600 meals. Good news, we had the USDA announce on Monday, this past Monday, that they are extending the meal waiver to provide meals, free meals, to all kids as late as December 31st, 2020. And we say as late as because we want to be very careful. The USDA had not expended all of their money, and that is why this has been extended. But this is great news for everyone. Again, it does, you know, create another pivot for the department and how they look at things. And they, you know, they've redone menus again for I don't even know how many of time. And the good thing about this is also we will be able to serve seven meals. So we will be able to serve seven breakfasts and seven lunches per week. We do want to make sure that everyone still knows to please complete your free and reduced application because we do need those applications, and we do not know how long this waiver is going to last. So when we do come back to in-person and/or when this waiver stops, then we will need those free and reduced applications. And they also affect many other things within the district. So they affect how we get grant money, whether that is through 31A, which is at-risk money, or title money. So they are very, very important. Meal passout is on Fridays from 11:00 to 1:00. It is at Durant, Riverside, and Mason. Starting September 18th, we will be extending the hours at Durant only from 7:00 to 9:00. We're hoping that that will help for those parents that are working parents and can come in the morning. We will also, at that time, September 18th, also do two mobile bus routes that will have four stops each. Daily meals for childcare locations are being filled. So those individuals at the childcare locations are getting fed breakfast and lunch, and they will be given on Fridays two meals, both breakfast and lunch for the weekend. So they will also get their seven days. We are working with our point-of-sale software to institute a pre-order system. As you know, I know a lot of you, we've talked about this many times. We don't really know how many meals to pack for these distributions on Fridays. So the meal, the pre-order system will be a great help to us. It always seems that there's, you know, there's differences based on weather or, you know, just all different things, whether we're, whether it's up, you know, during, before a break or different things like that. Wanted a couple other things to let you know that the Senior Center has also been feeding this entire time. And if you look up in the corner of this slide, you will see the Kettering Coffee Shop. And so that is done. It has completed its final inspection, and it looks amazing. Sam is very, very happy with how that turned out. So that is just another thing. So when the kids do get back into the building, they will have a brand-new coffee shop. Going on, so I really, really have to say thank you to all those staff members that are in Food Service. Childcare. Childcare opened as of August 31st. They, the staff was wonderful. They actually came to Jackie, who is the childcare director, and asked if we were not going to be in-person school, if they could have a day-long childcare program. So that childcare program goes from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There are three sites open. Stepansky is for three- to four-year-olds, Riverside and Grayson. And like I said, with Food Service slide, they do have daily meal service, and now it is free. And they will also get those additional meals for the weekend to take home with them. And athletics. Okay, athletics, there's a lot going on. So let's, we'll just go over this slide, and then we can just go over a few things that just happened as of today at about 4 o'clock. So the summer practice and training, you can see all those sports there on your screen. You can see up in the corner, there's some pictures there of the coaches and the students, and they did a fabulous job. Big shout out to Allison Sartorius, the coaches and the students. They were wonderful. They had over 5,900 check-ins in the summertime. They did exactly what they were supposed to do. They had their temperature checked. They had to fill out their form prior to. All the coaches were there. They all wore masks. They were separated six feet apart in distance. So they just did an absolutely wonderful job. You can see the fall practice and training sports below. So all of those sports are our fall sports, and they've been training during this time. And they have over 3,600 check-ins with approximately, well, approximately 420 student athletes. So great work there. They do have a lot of things in place for COVID and very strict measures that they have to go by. They have COVID bins for every sport. Currently, Allison has over 20 COVID bins out and another 20 COVID bins that she's preparing because middle school sports are also going to start. Those COVID bins include disinfectant spray, paper towels, hand sanitizer. You can see the touchless thermometers. Anything that they request, they can put into those bins. Allison does make them, her and her staff make them and send them out to all the coaches, and they replenish them. So anything that they need to be replenished, they just ask, and those bins are replenished. Okay, fall sports update. So I had something written down here for the fall sports update, but as we know, that did change. So I did get some information from Allison regarding that. So she does have that MHSAA information in hand and is looking over it probably tonight as we speak. And I'm going to continue to dive into it and look deeper into it this weekend. But from what we can tell, as far as we can see, swim and volleyball have been cleared to go inside because the governor did open up pools. So they've been cleared to go inside as of Wednesday. Soccer, swim, volleyball can all now have competitions. There are strict limits on spectators and the number of those in the venue. We're still trying to figure that out. I did read a couple different things about that, about parents, or excuse me, about student athletes getting two passes per student athlete. But there's some other restrictions that are involved in that, and Allison is going to go through that with our association also. And it looks like football is going to be reinstated for a six-game season and that everyone makes the playoffs. So every football team makes the playoffs. Again, she's going to go over these, you know, with a fine-tooth comb this weekend because it does look like a lot of these will be back up and running as of next Wednesday, September 9. So does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. And actually, it may be for you and Jim together.
Okay.
So there's been a lot of grumbling about us having childcare open. And, you know, I was led to believe that it's probably more like safety care. It's not like the traditional kind of childcare, where they're sitting in a circle, playing with puzzles and toys and all of that. So can you please tell the community what the difference in childcare now, as opposed to what childcare usually looks like?
Yeah.
Either one of you?
Sure. So Jackie was very conscientious, and we all did talk about this as a group. So first, the numbers that you can have with one childcare worker, we have drastically reduced those for one childcare worker. And we also reduced the number of, I'll say, groups of kids, so one childcare worker per group. So we did not have as many as we could. So each of these sites only has, at a maximum, 60 students. So specifically, Riverside is pretty much full. Grayson is not. I believe Grayson only has 47 students. So they are smaller groups of students, and they do move between multiple areas. So they move between... So those kids are not all grouped together at once. One section of those students are in the gym. One section of those students might be in the library media center. One section of those students would be in the cafeteria. And then we do have other areas, such as the hubs in the schools, that they can also be into. So does that help?
A little bit, yeah. How many kids would you say per group? And how many groups? So if you have 60 kids, how many different groups, how many kids?
There's... So at Riverside, which is just about fall, Riverside has four groups with 15 kids in each group.
Okay.
Grayson only has 47 kids. So they do have four groups too, but they have less in each of those groups.
Okay. And there's a large portion of the time that the kids are just sitting there on their device, doing their schoolwork, correct?
Yeah. So they are also doing their work on their device, and they can be doing it on their device, or they can be doing it in the media center on a device. And if they are doing it in the media center on a device, they are assigned to one computer, so that they don't continuously change computers. And if they use the headset, that is their headset to use for that duration.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
All right. So I guess it's my turn. All right, here. So as you can imagine, we have had a lot of communication going out. We have had a lot of changes. We've had a lot of information to make sure our parents are getting. So first off, I just need to say thank you to our parents, because we have filled their email boxes, and we have filled their minds with a lot of communication and information over these past several months. So thank you to all of them for being patient, because sometimes an information is changing pretty quickly, as we talk about those quick rate turns. So first and foremost, we do have our Blackboard system. That is being utilized at very high rates right now, sending staff information and parent. Sometimes they are going separate, and sometimes they are together. It all depends on what the nature of the message is. We have a little bit of a bump in the road that I think is important to explain to our families if there are any concerns. I will show you in a few minutes how to fix one of these bumps, but we do have families that are not receiving messages. It is so very important that they go into their parent portal and update all their contact information to make sure that we are reaching them. That information from the parent portal speaks directly to Blackboard on a nightly basis. So if you change it on Monday, it will be updated automatically on Tuesday. The other bump in the road that we are working through is as we are separating out our students who are virtual versus remote, we have essentially one inbox for all of our virtual students at the elementary level and one for the middle-school level. We are working right now to create separate, one for each of their home schools. It is very important to the buildings and to us to make sure that the Grayson kids, whether they're remote or virtual, are getting the Grayson information and so on and so forth, because they are still part of that community. We are working through that, because it's not, unfortunately, an automatic feed-through at this time. So hopefully, within the next week, we'll have a good system set for that process. So we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through that. As Deb mentioned at the very beginning of this, we were a part of the professional development videos. It was great to see everyone come together and collaborate, the different ways that the videos were done. People who usually aren't camera people were stepping up to the plate and doing these videos. Jane DeKelly did an amazing job with Deb's direction. I think things just worked out very well. So we were very happy to be a part of that process. We also had our Welcome Back videos. There was one specifically for our staff, and then one that went out to our community. This year, as everyone knows, is very different, and so we're trying to approach this in a more personable and honest way. So it's not just about the bells and whistles and balloons. It's about really being thankful, talking about the community, and how we're all working together. With our social media, we have been using all of our outlets. Sometimes it's informational, and we are also working on that positive piece. We do have parents who, the first place that they're getting their information is on our Facebook page. So most of the important information that we are sharing via Blackboard, whether it be phone call, email, or text message, we are also being sure to post that to Facebook, so they can share that information. They may see it sooner that way. It's just an important piece in our communication plan. And the positive stuff. It didn't look like normal this year, but we still started school, and we still had smiling, toothless kids holding up First Day of School signs, and our parents really came through and shared those with us. And it's just so great to be able to see all those smiling faces, because that's really what we're all here to do. So we appreciate that, and we will continue to move that positive force moving forward. The personal connections piece. I have to make sure I don't miss anyone as I say all of my thank yous, my shout-outs. We have had so many personal connections, whether it be phone call or email. And with the amount of people that were calling and the questions that we had, it was Deb Jacobson and, I'm sorry, Dawn Jacobson and Deb Kramer and Grace Cook and Jane DeKelly and Stacy Wright and Megan Roberts, all of us, and many more. I'm sure I'm missing someone, so I apologize for that. But it was pretty unbelievable how quickly they became experts at software they'd never used before, and concepts they'd never really probably thought of before, in an effort to really help our parents understand, because there was a lot coming very quickly for them. And so it was a lot of work, but every piece of the way, it was worth it. And we couldn't have done it without that amazing team. So we do still have calls and questions coming in, and we are working with our families. We appreciate for those that did have to wait a little bit to get that call back, but we are hoping to reach every single one of you and help you with your questions. So the next part, I'm going to actually drive here a little bit. We do have our new district website, and as it switched over right before the school year, we really wanted to make sure that our community knew all the places they could go to find the information. So if you can bear with me, I'm going to actually try to change my screen here. I have it up over here. My apologies. All right. Somebody nod if you can see the website. All right, great. So because it's the most important thing for people right now in our community, there are several places where you will be able to find our Return to Learn. So first and foremost, the screen is a little bit dark, and you see right here, this message. Right here is going to be any kind of information we have that is important for you to know. This is where our snow day messages would go, things along that line. But also, right at the very bottom, if you were to click right here, this would take you to our academic page with our Return to Learn. This also pops up on every single school that you go to. So if I were to go over to Beaumont, if a family goes directly to the Beaumont page, they will see that same message. That is one place where you can absolutely find all your information. So going back to District Home, there are a few more spots where you can see things as I X out again. Over here, when you first sign on, you have a larger square, Return to Learn Plan. You click here. That gets you to the same page. Also, that same visual is going to... Actually, I'm sorry, not the same visual, but this will take you again to that exact same place, and your final way to get there is right here. So this Return to Learn button will take you to the page that we've been asking you to visit since the very beginning of this process. It's important for everyone to note, when you see all of these blue boxes, that these do drop down. This gives us the ability, it helps with ADA compliance, but it also gives the ability for a person to go exactly where they need to go. You do not want to read everything about remote to in-person if you are in the Virtual Academy. So we wanted to try to streamline that process for our families. So this is where everything is. We are going to continue to update information here, specifically for the Waterford Virtual Academy. We do have another page with all of those links and helpful videos that families can watch. So we are going to continue to feed this page of all the information that we have as things continue to change. The last thing I do want to show you on this page again, is if you need to update your parent portal information, it is right here. You click this button right here with the star, and it's going to take you right to your parent portal. And once you're in here, you log in, you're able to change your information. And again, that will update every night for us. So other than that, I'll pop back into this slideshow. I hope that quick tour helped families in that particular section. I'm going to pop this back up here. I hope I can start from where I'm supposed to. Might have to do some scrolling. No, there we go. Finally, the only thing I do want to mention is that we are currently wrapping up the plans on one communication plan and starting the next. We want to be prepared for whatever is going to happen along the way, while we are taking every measure we can to keep everyone safe. We are creating every single letter you could possibly imagine, so we can communicate with any stakeholders we need to in any of our circumstances, whether there is a case in one of our buildings, an exposure. All of those are being worked on, and I have to say thank you to Jim Beaver and to Susan File, because it has been a handful of meetings and a lot of emails to work on flow charts and making sure that we're using the appropriate language as we communicate with our families. The last portion is my favorite stuff. It's the good stuff. It's community building. Right now, we are working on making sure we're still telling the story about our district and all the wonderful things that are happening. It looks different, but we're still doing the work, and it's great. So we are working on plans to really showcase everyone, because we have that slogan, "Together we thrive for a reason." Each group is doing something that makes this all possible. So that will be coming down the pipeline very soon. Any questions?
I just, I have. I just have a comment. I just, you know, I think that you and Jane and Grace, and I know there's a whole bunch of names you named off, you guys did a fantastic job. I mean, something would get posted on Facebook, and then 10 people would ask the same question all over the place, Waterford Manners, whatever. And then the next thing you know, here comes a Blackboard Connect letter, you know, answering everybody's questions. And I know that you can't return all the phone calls. I mean, trust me, I drive by the board office on my way home from work, and I see all the cars there, and it gives me kind of a panic attack of March and April, because, you know, we went through that. Being a court, I mean, the volumes of phone calls and the unknowns and the files piling up and falling over, and the 30-day adjournments, and oh my God, this is going on longer, and we're going to adjourn, and the phones. And, you know, and I remember, people would walk out of work at night, and you could hardly even muster up a "See you tomorrow." And I'm certain some people cried on their way home. And so you guys have done a phenomenal job, I think, in getting stuff out. And, you know, if there are more than five people answering a question, then there's something coming out. I think one thing to put in the back of our heads, though, going forward, is that people were getting in arguments over Parent Portal and MyStar. I'm like, oh my, they're the same thing. They're the same thing. But, you know, people, sometimes they didn't get it. They thought, well, I don't have Parent Portal, I have MyStar. And they're like, oh, well, I use Parent Portal. Oh, I use My... And like, they're the same thing. It's the MyStar Parent Portal. And then I think a lot of people don't understand, and maybe we really need to drive this home more in elementary school, because I remember when my kids were at Stepansky, and Mrs., I think it was Mrs. Mulcahy, is that who the principal was, I think, over there? Look at lady. And she said, she gave you this paper, and she said, "This is your Blackboard Connect. Don't touch it. Don't stop it. Just let it go." And we were all like, okay, you know what I mean? So people need to understand that if you come into this district and you don't get something about a snow day, or you don't get something about something, then you're not enrolled in Blackboard, and you need to be in Blackboard. And I was amazed by the amount of people that said, "I've never gotten an email from the district," and their kid was in seventh grade. And I'm like, oh my gosh, how can that happen? You know, like, I knew even before I was on the school board. I'm like, huh, orientation's coming. Where's my email? Where's my email? You know what I mean? So I think we need to stress that. Not now, but mental note to self for later, that those three things, there's a lot of confusion about them, and there's a lot of back and forth about them. So that's all I have to say. Other than that, you guys have been doing a great job. So, thanks.
And Julie, you bring up a good point. I also should suggest to families, if they're not receiving emails, if their MyStar Parent Portal is up to date, then what they need to do is they actually need to check and see if one were going to their spam, or they do need to reach out to my office, because we will be finding that individuals have opted out. And if they do opt out of our emails, they just get bounced back and go into the garbage, essentially. We have had a handful of people that, when we talked to them, we realized that we have been blocked. And it's somewhere along the line, they probably got frustrated with one of the many versions. Maybe it was attendance, or one of those things that just automatically populates. But if you block one version of us, you block all of it. So please, if you want to know about your snow days and all the important things that are going on in the district, be sure to not opt out and get in touch with us if you need some updating help.
I have something. I'd been getting a few calls on the Virtual Academy, parent portals, all the different things, and people not being able to get a hold of anyone. They'd make a call to every office, and no one was picking up, nobody. And again, it's the beginning of the school year. In a normal year, we have bus routes. We have other things that are just, everything is brand-new. I understand that. I haven't gotten any in a few days. I turned the people over to other people. I'm hoping that that is all getting kind of resolved, it sounds like, with the new website. Again, when I was talking to a couple of secretaries, they had no clue as to who to turn the people on to. But again, it is the beginning of the year, an unprecedented year. But I just want to make sure that we are grasping that. We are, again, we may be a week behind in calling people, but we are returning the calls. We are getting with people and making sure that they are aware of what's going on, where they're supposed to be, and giving them that comfort that they're really looking for. They want an answer right now, but when you're answering 15 other people, right now, might be a couple of days. I just want to make sure that we are reaching out and touching all those people.
Yeah, and I'll speak to that, Rob. One of the things that we've realized is, and we had an issue this morning, I got an email at late morning, and I went over to talk with Stacy to see about responding to this, and she said, "Oh yes, I talked to that parent an hour or two ago." So what we realize is, because this was an anxious time, they might be calling a number of us and emailing a number of it, and that was kind of slowing us down. But what I will tell you is that we were taking our time. We know that many of us, we might spend 5, 10, 15 minutes with parents. And so we know that that was frustrating, but we wanted to make sure that all of their issues were handled before we got off the phone. So we were a little bit behind, and it just, that crunch time came last Friday when schedules weren't available, and they thought they would be, let's say, 11:00, and they weren't until 4:00. So I think we've worked through that, and I think the team would probably nod to that. We've really seen that, like, probably you've heard, Rob, it really slowed down here in the last couple of days. This team, even over the weekend, I know that we were talking to people. So, and to be honest, there was some times they didn't like the answer, so they thought they'd call back two or three different times, see if they get the same answer.
That's the way it always goes. It doesn't matter. They don't care if it's the answer. If it's not the answer they want, so they will keep calling back. But again, I haven't gotten calls in a few days, so I'm hoping whoever, I might turn people over to people that... over to people, that it's resolved. So it's, it's good. But again, it's the beginning of the year. On a perfectly good sunny day, beginning of the year, we have issues. There's always something. So it's, and I haven't gotten calls in a few days, so I'm very happy with that. So thank you in that regards.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with each of you. I'm going to give a brief update on what's been going on in human resources and staffing and how we're caring for our employees. Kelly, if you could advance for me? Okay. To begin with, we have been working very closely with our leadership teams in MSPO 1, 2, and 3, to meet the needs of the buildings as well as the employees. We have elicited a lot of feedback, and we've asked a lot of questions on what is it that we need from each of these three groups in order to get our jumbo 747 off the ground? And they have all, I, a big thanks to each of these groups and the leadership that they have afforded in meeting with us and lots of Zoom calls and establishing schedules and really being flexible and, I want to say agile and ready to do what they needed to do. So big, big thanks to each of them. Also, we've been working very closely with our WEA, MEA leaderships, teams to support our teachers and really keep us, keeping our focus on how are we supporting teaching and learning? What, what is it that each of us are doing? And thanks to each of those members there. We've also in HR been very actively responding to any cases of COVID-19 reports with care, specifically in utilizing the Action Response Plan that we've developed together as a team. Kelly has created a great flow chart that we originally prepared in July. We dated it in July. After a meeting just this week, we've updated it. Each of our, and Kelly has sent it out to each of the buildings and all of the team. And it's interesting, because in our communications back and forth with building leadership, they'll say, okay, where am I at in my question on the flow chart? So it's been really, really helpful utilizing that. And you'll see, and it'll be on the website, Kelly has it for, just recently updated, as of today. We update, updated that based on the updated information from CDC. We stay very, Jim and I specifically stay very close in tune to the updates on CDC as to changes in, if there are changes in quarantining or protocol of testing and what's required. In addition, communicating with Oakland County Health Division and being very transparent with information back and forth between them, that helps us in doing what we're doing, what we, we need to be doing to support the community at large as well, to mitigate the spread and be each of us responsible citizens in doing our case in the contact tracing. Lastly, HR has been assisting employees with leave requests under the federal COVID-19 guidelines. I can't thank the HR staff enough. That's Sherri Keelik, Tina Wheeler, and Laura Schultz for their incredible response to the massive influx of questions to our department. And they, they have just done an outstanding job in teaching me every day, supporting me every day as we support the district. And I just wanted to give a very special thanks to each of them. The next slide, please, Kelly. Oh.
Back to you.
Yes, one, there should be, there we go, staffing and, and the, staffing the district. So I wanted to give a, an overview of where we're at. Each year, we, this happens pandemic or not, there are last minute changes, and we just have to anticipate that, and we have to be prepared for that. We have, this year since July 1, we've had 14 teachers to join the Waterford School District. Eight of those new teachers are in the Special Education Department. Two of those teachers are counselor, I say teachers, I'm, two of the WEA members are counselors, and one has been a new addition to high school language arts team. And three, the three most recent have been joining in the elementary Waterford Virtual Academy. So this past week, we've interviewed with a team of elementary principals and gone through the selection process, and we've had a great fortune to have three joining our team. They'll be starting in the next 10 days. Resignations and retirements since June, June 30, 2020. And again, this happens every year. We had a total of 25, five of which are retirements, 20 which were resignations since June 30. In addition to those 25, we had four teachers that chose to take a year-long leave of absence. As part of the WEA contract, we afford that to our teachers that we don't want to lose them, we don't want to lose their investment in the district and our investment in them. And only four this year have chosen to take the year off and take care of themselves, their families, and for personal reasons. So that's a total of 29 so far. The first day of school, from the HR lens, we are, I want to talk a little bit about our preparation and the success I felt that we had as a district. By August 31, at 7:00 AM, every teacher, every classroom district-wide had a teacher assigned to them. And in the face of a pandemic, I doubt every district could say that. We, I'm really, really appreciative to everybody that stepped up there. In preparation, we weren't certain of how things were going to go, so we called back our, our permanent, we call them permanent building substitutes. And they were, in the, in the week prior, they were present, they were training, and they were prepared in the event that we needed them for a classroom. And this is, again, great kudos to the, the administration in the, in the buildings. I know they utilize every hands-on deck approach, and these, I know these building substitutes were helping answering phones, helping prepare packets, helping to hand out materials, and as well as all of the office staff and the administrators themselves were doing all of that. We did a, another preventative measure. We in HR, we scheduled additional edge of staff substitutes district-wide, just to be available in the event that we needed them. And I say with great relief that we did not need them, and so we were able to, we communicated across the district, and we were able to say to them after two hours, thank you very much, we're fully staffed, and, but in the event of a tsunami, we were trying to be prepared. As I stated here, collaborating with the principals to monitor the building staffs that's going forward. Things change. I wanted to be, I wanted the, the buildings to be really supported at the beginning. You just don't know what your needs are until sometimes you're right there. And so we, I'm staying in constant contact with them on what we need. We'll reassess that. We're going to be starting up our pods. The needs might change. We may need more, we may need less, and we'll continue to be agile and responsive, both through our employees as well as fiscally to meet the needs of the buildings and the district overall. I think that was the keys that I wanted to highlight. And again, thank everybody. In my short 63 days in the district, I have been incredibly supported, and I really thank each of you for the, the amount that you've helped me in the success that we've had so far in HR. Are there any questions? Okay.
I'll ask, Scott, are we, we did the more general, the more general question? Okay, good. So this might be, grabbing the controls back here, okay. This might be a more for Susan, Jim, and Scott. I'm wondering if the three of you, or whomever I do this best, could say more about the COVID-19 WSD Action Response Plan. What is that, like, understanding our local context? I've, I've, I've talked to a lot of teachers, a lot of staff over the last couple of weeks, and, and I think, I think they're, they're interested. I'm interested. So if you would, please tell us a little bit about what that plan looks like.
Yeah, I'm wondering, and I don't know, I don't want to put Kelly in the spot, but I'm wondering, can you bring up the, the flow charts? Because it'd probably be easier to have a diagram to go through that, right?
The flow charts with.
The action plan going.
The two pages.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me pull it up in the background while you guys aren't looking, and then I'll shoot a little note to make when I have it up. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we can bring that up, I think it's a real clear plan, but it, it'll, we'll be able to see it better when it's on there. So maybe if there's another question, we'll come back to that while Kelly's pulling that up, if that's okay, President Ristich.
Yeah, absolutely. And just for our, our viewing audience here, we will take, we'll do audience comments as soon as we wrap up our Q and A here. We've got a couple of hand raised, so I just want to, I just want to be clear. And we'll take audience comments as soon as we're, we're done with this section here. Remember someone, do you have a question?
It's really more of a comment, well, and it's a great question, so I am looking forward to that. Thank you. I have seen a, a lot of emails. I've been on so many angry phone calls, and I've seen numerous posts on social media where, where our community, and I get it, they're frustrated, they're lashing out. So many have said things like, what have you been doing all summer? And why did you wait till the last minute? And how come you didn't have a plan? And we know, you're frustrated, you're disappointed. None of this looks like what we wanted this to look like. None of this feels normal. But we just spent almost two hours learning about the teaching and learning plans, the student support services, the technology, the transportation, the operation side of the business, the food service, the facilities, the childcare, the human resources plan, the athletics, the communications plan, the staffing plan, the HR plan. And, and during this time, we've had to comply with all the changes in the CDC and the Oakland County Health Department and all of the infectious disease recommendations. In this time, since January, we have had 176 executive orders that we have to comply with, two of them today relative to sports. So that was executive order 175, 176. So I just want to, out of my deep admiration and respect for this team and for the work that has gone on here, I want to assure our parents that, yes, there was a plan, and then another plan, and then another plan, and then we pivoted, and then we took a sharp right, and then we took a sharp left. And sometimes we had to go backwards to plans that we had already planned and re-instituted those because things shifted again. And so it has been an extraordinary effort, a Herculean effort, under unprecedented circumstances. And still, still, the work that the, the administration, the staff, the teachers, every single person in the Waterford School District has never lost focus on doing what is best for our children and making sure that our community and our children in our schools and our staff are safe, and that we are keeping a precision focus on what we're here to do. So I, I just, I have immense respect and admiration for the work that you have all done. I am grateful for the two hours you just spent to show how hard it has been and how far we have come. And I just, I, I just wanted to extend my sincere and heartfelt gratitude to each one of you and to all of the people that have worked tirelessly through all of this to get us to this place. And, and to thank our community for their patience and for understanding and for your support as we all work through this and we're in it together. So I just wanted to share my gratitude. So thank you.
Joan, on behalf of the team, that, that means a whole lot. Been challenging times. I can assure you, as your superintendent, we have had multiple plans ready to go every time, and, and we had to make changes. And so thank you so much. That, that means a lot. I think Kelly's ready, so if we put those flow charts up, I'll have Kelly and Susan kind of go through it, talk about our action response plans there.
Okay, Kelly, you want me to start? Okay, so page one of the Action Response Plan is specifically about us, on a Waterford School District staff or staff member or a student. So the three columns before you are specifically related to our community. If a staff or student has a confirmed positive COVID result, test result, the far left-hand column, the CDC recommends, number one, you're excluded from Waterford School District, and you isolate at home until the following things. Your symptoms have improved, you are 24 hours fever-free without the use of fever-reducing medication, and the temperature that they're requiring is 100.4 or less. That's considered a fever. If you have, if you have a 100.5 temperature, that's considered a fever. Plus, the third parameter is 10 days have passed since the symptoms first appeared. So you have to comply with all those things before you return to Waterford School District. Now, what happens is, if there is a confirmed positive case, we are asking our staff members, or we will be asking students as well, to notify administration that this has happened so that we can then start the contact tracing piece, start the information to the Oakland County Health Division, so that then they might, might start conducting the contact tracing and all of the pieces that go along with, for the epidemiology studies and purposes. The middle column is the, a student or staff is symptomatic and awaiting a COVID-19 test result. You just don't think you feel well, you're, you're, you're not well, you, we ask that you exclude yourself from school. We, we sent out a communication on Monday morning, 6 o'clock, 6:30, it hit the inbox of, and one of those things was, if you don't feel well, stay home. If you get the results while you're staying home, that they're positive, you're going to move over into the column on the left, and you're going to follow that parameter. If the test is negative, you still need to ensure that you're fever-free for 24 hours without the use of medication before you return to school. As we know, there's, there's a broad range of symptoms for COVID-19. What one person exhibits, maybe another one exhibits something differently. We've all heard it multiple times. So we want to err on the side of caution, and if you have those symptoms, then you realize after two days, no, it really is, it's hay fever, it's, it's seasonal allergies, it's not COVID. You're improving. You can return. The last column on the right is if a student or staff member has had close contact to a confirmed COVID-19 case. Close contact, the CDC defines. Close contact, the CDC defines as 15 minutes contact with or without a mask within six feet of the person with the confirmed case. For example, and I'll continue on, if that's the case, you exclude yourself from Waterford School District for 14 days as a precautionary after the last date of contact with that person. That is because we know from CDC, you may not develop the disease for two to 14 days upon being exposed. You may never exhibit symptoms. You don't know how you're going to react, but in being precautionary, we ask that you exclude. You then have to be symptom-free for 24 hours before returning. In that last case, so, so that we all understand as well. The federal government put into place the EPSLA Act, and that is the Expanded Paid Leave Act, that if you have to be absent from your job because you're, you're quarantining, you're, you're isolating yourself because of your contact, because you had a confirmed positive. We have worked really closely with the few cases that we've had that if you feel well enough to work from home and you're capable to complete your essential job functions, then you do that. You don't take an absence. It doesn't hit a leave bank. You can continue to contribute to your educational community. If you are sick or if you're unable to complete your essential job functions, such as you work for food services and you can't pack food at home, right? You were afforded 80 hours under the federal guidelines of 80 hours up to, for that of paid leave time. And we've had a couple of cases. That's been the case. We've communicated that to the employees. They are extremely grateful. It's, it's, I, I'm really happy. I'm so grateful to work with the people in this. When they come to us and we collaborate, many of them, I'm well enough to keep working. Some haven't been able to. They've been very thankful for the 80 hours of paid leave time. Any questions before we move on to the next page? So again, this is a staffer student is positive or they're symptomatic awaiting test results or they've had close contact. This can be close contact at school or this can be close contact. I found out that I was with my family at a celebration party over the weekend or whatever the case may be. And then I was notified that in fact, one of them became positive. This is the mystery of this disease. We, we may feel perfectly fine. We don't know that we're exposed. And then all of a sudden we become positive. Hence the vigilance we need to enact. Wearing our mask, social distancing, six feet apart, hand washing and taking care of each other and ourselves.
Susan, who can contact Tracy?
So we, I work firsthand with the employees to help with the HR piece. Can you work? Are you able to? Do you need leave? I immediately contact Jim and notify the employee that Jim is coming into it because I, you know, we have to be very sensitive for HIPAA reasons as for personal anxiety reasons. And I notify them that Jim is our contact person that then picks it up to complete the required documents to notify Oakland County Health Division. And that's essential. And so then the employee or this will be students when that, if that happens, that they then will be notified by Oakland County of, to complete contact tracing. And you know, I, I've had great responses too, that they're calling and saying, we're checking in on you. How are you feeling? Are you well? Are you, are you, are you feeling worse? Do you need to help? And I, we've had results of that happening as well. So that's, that's the step. I do the HR. Jim steps in, also Jim steps in to immediately deploy the cleaning and the disinfecting side. I mean, so he, he's doing two-pronged there of taking care of the building and then taking care of the contact tracing.
Yeah. So once I, once I get ahold of it, Mike, we, for positive cases, we're immediately filling out. There's a form from the Health Department that we fill out. We're, we're completing that form. If we have information from that individual to complete the form, we'll, we'll, we'll do it and then just submit it to the, to the Health Department. If not, then we've got to make a contact to that staff member and ask some questions. And that's always a good opportunity to also just kind of have that conversation about, you know, with the standard of the 15 minutes within six feet. You know, do you think, you know, do you, can you recall? Can you provide us with some names of some folks who you thought you might have been in close contact with? So we, we kind of start that conversation and then we'll share that with the Health Department too. It immediately gets assigned to an epidemiologist and they carry the ball. They will, depending on the nature of the case and how much work we've been able to do on our end to provide them with information. You know, they, they may or may not contact that individual. Usually they will just, just to make sure. You know, obviously we're covering our, our end from the operations and the business side of it. But like Susan stated, you know, where was this person at, you know, in their personal life and their personal activity? So those are other sectors that we don't dip into so much, but maybe the Health Department's going to ask those questions to, to, again, this is about mitigating it for our whole community, you know? So, so it's taken very seriously.
I have one more question maybe before you move on here. So understanding that in our neighboring districts, we had, we had one neighboring district had to shut down an elementary school. Yeah. So how, how was that determination made? And I know that we touched upon this in our previous two meetings, our longer meetings. But I think that might be useful to touch upon here as well.
Yeah. So let me just share a quick background. So I'm meeting every week now. We have a couple of our local superintendents that we're meeting with the Oakland County epidemiologist. And so we're talking about the numbers. I want to share with everyone. And what I'll share in board notes tomorrow, that if you don't already know, Oakland County has a pretty well-developed dashboard of information that drills right down to every school district and where those numbers are at. So in terms of people are wondering when we will consider coming to the board and talking about reopening, we're watching those numbers and we're working with this epidemiologist. We're going to continue to do that every week. In those conversations, President Ristich, I asked the same questions. Well, what's going on? Can you help us? What happened in such and such district or this high school and that? So we know what happened. We know what should have happened and what didn't happen. And so I don't want to, you know, get into the specifics. Some of that stuff was shared in confidentiality, but really it's, it's working with the Health Department as, as Jim mentioned, and that's important. And we've got those contact numbers. So I'm not so sure, sometimes people react very quickly. So there was a high school, for example, that was closed down. And you know, we were said, well, maybe it wasn't so much about how many cases, but it was more about a PR issue and pictures that were shown. So we're up against that all the time. And some of us and, and some of us superintendents were up against that. And if we can't get immediate answers, we, we sometimes will over, over re respond to that. But we talked about, you know, how many cases, what does it, what does it call for if we're going to close a building? And that's why working with the Health Department, as Jim mentioned, they will help us make those decisions. Is it closing a classroom? Is it closing down the whole school? Does that help?
Yeah. So on the one hand, I heard that there are these, these, these pressures largely related to social media and sort of out of context information. And that, that influences decision-making. And this other one, which is when it comes to what's on the ground, what we know, data, data-driven decisions. Districts have to work, are working and have to work closely with county health officials to make determinations about whether or not to close the classroom or close the school.
Right. And these are one of those challenges. I mean, we, we all don't have Epi, these types of degrees in healthcare. I will say we're very happy to help that Oakland County Health Department is really stepped up to a point where we need to be able to work with them in partnership. And part of that came out of one of these more recent executive orders. And in fact, also in board notes will be the second of weekly COVID reports. And one of the things in our conversations last week is we wanted not only some of the information they provided, but trends. How are we trending in certain areas and certain age groups? So again, it's so important. I just come back to, we've got to work with the Health Department, as Jim mentioned, because they, they know, they will help guide us in that.
And going back to the nurses that we talked about earlier, having them on board now is certainly going to help us, you know, with, with those connections and helping to determine what level we should be at, depending on the amount of cases that we have.
Yeah. And in one piece, I just want to make sure that in Jim's presentation that we know, we were so pleased to hear on the Zoom call with them, I think it was yesterday or the day before, that they're going to be in our buildings, they're going to be walking our buildings and they're going to be talking with our staff members. So we know that we want to continue to build the confidence in our systems and in our procedures and what we're doing. And so they're going to come from, you know, the medical background and that. So, and, and their degrees to help, help us with that and help really encourage your staff to be confident in our processes. And if we're missing something, then they're going to be talking with us, say, hey, you may want to consider A, B, and C.
So at the building level too, so understanding that, you know, we have, we have all these people working on it, on make, ensuring that our environments, our classrooms, our schools are safe. When it comes to the building level, are the principals who are the ones who are monitoring the overall ecosystem of the schools and making sure that, that the hand sanitizers are full? Things are being cleaned and disinfected at a, at a regular interval? In other words, at that building level, who's make, who's monitoring the situation there?
Jim, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, yeah, it would definitely be the building administrator. You know, we've, they've, they've been very good about letting us know when they feel that there are things that need to be addressed. Like I said, you know, we centralized, you know, all the purchasing of, of hand sanitizers and whatnot as we get back into the regular school mode. You know, we'll, we'll have to count on them to monitor their supplies within their building. And again, our custodial team is dialed in. We've, we've modified those schedules and whatnot. So you know, we're, we're out there, you know, on a regular basis, walking the buildings just to make sure that everybody has what they need and that, you know, all the appropriate cleaning is getting done on a regular basis.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for tolerating my questions here. I'm eager to see.
That's good. Okay, I'm going to go on to the Action Response Plan of, this is a household member, a COVID-19 case in, excuse me, in the household member of one of our students or staff. So starting on the left-hand side, the household member has a positive confirmed case of COVID-19. You'll see the staffer student excludes from Waterford School District for 14 days. They must be symptom-free for 24 hours. And then after that period of time, they can return. In the middle column, the household member is awaiting a COVID-19 test result. So if, you know, you, if your spouse or your child or has, for whatever reason, has tested, we ask that you exclude from Waterford School District. If that household member tests positive, then you've looped back over into the left column again. And if not, if they're negative, if that test result is negative, then the staff or, or student may return to school. And the far right-hand side, this is, this is a little trickier one. And we work a lot in helping to educate people on this one. The household member has had a close contact to a confirmed COVID-19 case. So I'll use my specific example. So if it were, I'm the staff member. If my husband had a coworker that tested positive, see how far out it gets, right? So if my husband's coworker was positive and my husband potentially could have been exposed, comes home, potentially I could have been exposed. That is not close enough contact according to the CDC to exclude. What it does mean is they, we are responsible to monitor for symptoms, closely watch our health and ensure that we're practicing social distancing, mask wearing and safety measures to ensure that we don't become sick for the best that we possibly can. So this one has probably the most number of questions, people. My husband's coworker is sick, right? It doesn't, not until your husband becomes sick or your, or your spouse or your child becomes sick and you're actually living with someone in the same house, grandma, aunt, whoever it may be. Then that is, constitutes a reason to exclude from school. If you'll scroll the screen a little bit, Kelly, just down so we can just see the bottom of it. I don't know. I can't see it from where I am. Oh yeah, you're scrolling out. It's dated down. Kelly's updated the date in the bottom left-hand corner. So you'll see, yeah, yeah. So. Questions? This is the trickier one. So who has questions on this one? Good?
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask one more.
Okay, good.
So if a teacher has concerns or a staff member has concerns, what's the, what's the chain of command? Just, just in the same way, we have a chain of command with parents who have a question, have a question about password. Teacher first and upwards. What would be the chain of command for our teachers and staff members who have concerns?
So at the building level, the teachers have been contacting their, their principals, their administrators first and foremost, be it a secretary, anyone. So it first goes to the principals and the principals are just, you know, I mean, literally we're in contact 24/7. I mean, I'm, you know, we, we get emails that they just received and an info, you know, they received a text at midnight from one of their staff members. The, the principals are then contacting me and we're starting it just, just as rapidly as we can. So technology is our friend, certainly in this situation because we've stayed very close contact. If it is, let's say it's not someone that works in a school. If it was someone in food service or transportation, they'd be, they would be contacting their direct supervisors. Those direct supervisors are then contacting us and HR. We're immediately, Kelly, Jim and I are the tripod that's keeping the community informed as necessary and each other and anybody that potentially might have been exposed.
And I just want to remind, we, we have a gatekeeper component that's required in the roadmap and that's daily health checks. So every staff member is required to, to submit to a daily health check before they come in. So if they can't answer no to our, to the two questions, then they're to reach out to their direct supervisor immediately and have those conversations about what's going on, like Susan mentioned. Do I just have sniffles related to my allergies or do I have COVID symptoms that maybe we need to stay home and, and, and give it a day to see, you know, where it goes. So, you know, we, we ask staff to be vigilant about, about submitting those daily health checks. And really that's kind of, like I said, kind of a mechanism that's in place to try to avoid getting on the flow chart, right?
Excellent. Well, thank you two so much. Thank you. Colleagues, any, any other questions? Rob, Joan, Julie?
Did Bob or John Paul end up showing up tonight or not? I was wondering if Mr. Pigger or Ms. Torres ended up showing up tonight?
It doesn't, it doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, maybe while some folks are waiting, or maybe this might be the last one. Lisa, I'm wondering if you can say a little bit more about the sketch certification. This seems like an exciting development. And I'd just be interested to hear a little bit more about that. Is, is this something that is related to the, the situation surrounding COVID? Or is this part of a larger push or a larger plan? Or is this part of a larger push or a larger plan?
This is, and I'll have Deb join me if she has anything additional. This is something that changed last year. There was a big audit at the state level of sketches for educators, and they are for both teachers and administrators. We all do them every five years, we're required to. And it's something we can, you've always been able to apply to. Oakland Schools offers a lot of things. If you go to a conference at the state level, you can receive sketches. But for a while, they allowed us to use something they called District Provided PD, where we could just kind of keep attendance records, show that somebody attended and allow them to use that as credit towards their recertification. That went okay, but they wanted to formalize it a little bit more. And so now we were given the option of either using Oakland Schools to be our sketch provider and having to go through them all the time, which many years ago, that's how it worked, or becoming our own sketch provider. And for us, the benefit was, although it is a lot more work on, it won't be me, it'll be Deb now that it's. It will be free of charge for our teachers. Whereas if we went through Oakland Schools, every time they went for sketches, there was a fee for that. And so we just felt it was better for us. And Carly got that ball rolling, oh gee, back in like April, we had to start applying. And so it wasn't too long ago, we received confirmation that we were approved as a sketch provider.
But part of that is there are stricter requirements. It has to be pre-planned. It can't be just a last-minute meeting that occurs. You have to keep the agenda for potential audit and you have to have an attendance protocol. So what we've been using, which is working really well, is a Google Form. So we are using the exact same questions that other providers would have used. So if you attended a conference or or whatnot, it's identical and it's what the state is requiring. So what is your role? What did you glean from or learn from the conference? How can you apply that to your practice, your craft, your role? And then we also added a question component. So as we're getting all of those forms back, we're creating a sheet so that we have the accountability measures and keeping all of the documentation for state potential audit. But it also affords us the opportunity to take those questions and send them right back out to staff in an FAQ document. So as they had questions about COVID or about Google or about edgenuity, whatever their their training was, then we can blast that all out. So if other teachers across the district, regardless of the level, had additional questions or concerns or comments, we can capture those and then continually share out. It also gives us the opportunity to kind of gauge where they are and then plan for additional PD for them. So we already, actually, two days ago, began planning for November. So we're right back at it and looking forward to, again, the math work, continued SEL work, assistance with Google and again, shared collaboration. And what was a really beautiful outcome of what we saw even over this past week is it didn't matter the level of the teacher. So elementary teachers, we're working with high school teachers across the district. Teachers were working with one another about, hey, this really works. This is a really great Google extension for attendance-taking purposes. They've created extra meetings and Zoom invites and Google Meet invites to continue the spirit of collaboration across, again, the entire district about different content pieces about, hey, I saw this, this is a great resource. So that spirit of collaboration, which is a natural outcome, has just been absolutely incredible to watch with our teachers. But again, back to the the sketch piece, it's accountability. It's affording the teachers the opportunity to have those credits and they can blend them either with college credits or with sketches. But it's helping them keep the accountability at the district level. And then we will upload it into Moex or the state recording site. So it's really a great service for our staff.
And very exciting. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, other questions?
I just wanted to welcome Deb Cooper to the to the show tonight. I think this is her first one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Patricia.
Welcome. Aren't you having fun?
I am. I'm loving it.
I'll have one last invitation. If there are any questions, if not, we'll we'll move to audience comment. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We're going to now move on to public comments. Those who wish to participate can signify their their desire to address the board by using the raise their hand feature on Zoom. Please be reminded that all comments are limited to five minutes in duration. Participants are asked to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive or obscene. So we're just going to start, well, since we have two hands raised, I'm going to invite Becky H. to talk here. Hi, Becky, are you there?
Hello, I am.
Okay, the floor is yours.
So the first thing I wanted to do is say, Mr. Riggs at Mott is amazing. He has worked tirelessly to make schedule changes and make sure that our packet pickups and book pickups went off without a hitch. So I I definitely wanted to make sure that you guys all knew that. The second thing is, I'm a graduate of Waterford Mott. My senior is at Waterford Mott. I have an eighth grader at Pierce and we're, one is remote and one is in academy. And, you know, I I sympathize with the board and with superintendent and with the teachers, with the principals. I know that everybody's doing everything that they can. The the real hiccup is with the, and I think somebody covered it, the notifications that stopped coming for the the students that are on Virtual Academy. You know, there wasn't really any notifications that came out. The principals really didn't know what to do. And a suggestion maybe is that you could look into posting all of the school's updates that are going out onto the district website under each school. So that way, the parents can actually make sure that we're getting everything. With the Virtual Academy, you know, my son goes to Pierce and all of a sudden, we started getting notifications for Mason and haven't gotten anything from Pierce. And so, you know, the concern is, is that we're we're missing notifications. So I don't know if that's something that is an easy task. I say that and I laugh because I'm a IT supervisor. So I know that putting in that request, your your IT people will probably love you. And I'm sure that they will do what they can. I just think it would streamline communication. And then also, you know, when documents are updated and you guys are posting them to the website, if you guys, Facebook is amazing. So if you guys can post from the Waterford School page that, you know, the the COVID response plan has changed or that there's, you know, announcements out there for a school or, you know, Pierce has an update or Kettering has an update, I just think it'll help. It's very, as a parent doing, you know, virtual and and remote, it's stressful. But I think that anything that you guys can do to streamline that communication would probably be really, really helpful. And then the other thing I want to say is that I learned a long time ago, transparency is key. So the best thing I think that you can do for the parents of the district is to be transparent. You know, when this whole thing started, I I commend you guys for the the shifting and the flow and in being agile. I think that what could have happened is we could have taken a step back and said, you know, we're not sure what the school year is going to look like. We have Plan A, here's what it is. We have Plan B, here's what it is. And go through all those plans and make those public to us. So that way, parents know and knew, would have known what was potentially coming down the pipe and potentially looking at it and saying, you know, there is a possibility where we are looking at going remote and halting the the registration that we had to do and the choices we had to make so drastically and so quickly to then have to turn around and redo them again and redo them again. I know that there's, you know, we had to do that so that you guys could do staffing. And I know staffing keeps changing. But, you know, I really think a lot of the frustration could have been avoided with just being 100% transparent with us.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Becky.
Thank you.
Now invite Leah. Hi, Leah.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, hi. I want to piggyback a little bit off what Becky said about the distribution thing. And maybe I heard Susan wrong, but I thought she said you guys brought in building subs from edgy staff to put together and distribute the materials. And I can't speak for everybody, but I know at Mott, who again, is being praised right now by the parents who are oftentimes not too happy with the district at the moment, that it wasn't edgy staff. It was actually your Waterford School District Employed Support Staff, the support staff that worked all week and then found out an hour after we got home Friday that we were furloughed. You know, after we went in all week, put together these packets for over 900 kids and then met with at least, like, I would say, 700 of them and their families face to face, which is something that many of your employees are not willing or or just cannot do. But, you know, it was asked of us and we did it. And we did it with a smile. We did it happily. We did it quickly and efficiently. You know, and then we got furloughed in an email. We couldn't even be told. And I just, I guess, was wondering, was it truly necessary and crucial to the stability of the school's budget to furlough low-paid employees and risk losing your good, hard-working employees? And is the district really saving enough money to take that risk? Because the district already has a hard enough time finding good employees at this level. I know you guys are well aware that support staff is hard to come by. So a lot of us aren't too happy with what happened and the way it happened. And that's all.
Thank you, Leah, for that. All right. Thank you for those, for the comments from Becky and Leah. Seeing no more business, we're going to wrap things up. Our next meeting is a regular meeting on September 17th. Colleagues, thank you so much for this robust presentation and conversation tonight. You're all greatly appreciated. And maybe to our parents who are watching, we're going into Labor Day weekend. And Labor Day, it's a time where we get together with friends and family, but it's also an important time, especially as it relates to our desire and hope to come back to school. So wear your masks, socially distance, update your MyStar, opt into the Blackboard and have a great, have a great Labor Day weekend, everyone. Congratulations on the first week and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.